Merry Christmas Mom! Merry Christmas! Yes! Thank you very much!
We will have one more minute so we can start the holiday budget here, special budget session. And may we request everybody to switch off your, or put it on a silent mode, your cellphones. So as not to bother the proceedings. And of course, observe silence. Avoid clapping of hands because this is a very formal deliberative assembly. In out nga, atong sundon ang atong house rules. Eh off ang atong mga cellphone or put it on a silent mode. Niya samting mag sige ayaw mo paggamit sa cellphone. O niya daghan ra ba dinhin, nimbaga din ng kadlang ayaw mo pa nga tugha. Kaya uban ra ba ang mga tug, dili kamatlong ni Hago na day sila. Kita may nimbaga din ang kuwan, misa di galyo. Oh si daghan kaayo, daghan kaayo. So daghan gin siguro magduka kay sa'yo mani mata, kaya nimbaman. So mag sugod na siguro ta. Ang uban ra bawa, raba makasulod no? Kuwan mani kining sitting capacity ramanggut ta. Pila pa manak, pwidi ma siguro, ato lang kuwanon, okay rin niyong mga member sa council, okay ra ba niyo? Atong pasudlon, bisag mag standing position, or standing? Sige pasudla lang na sila, ah pasudla lang, sige. Pero, sige maintain decorum lang. Sige, sudla mo, sudla, sige. Sidlang. Ni sugot man ang muta ng membro nga pasudlon. Miss sunod ba, oh, pero di lang ta mag saba, di ta mag historiyak. Padaplin lang ang uban. O niya inikasulod na sa tanan ato ng sirhan. Angking, 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 sirhina inikkuwan. So para makasugod na ta. Sirhina angking, so. Sige na mag sugod na ta. Sawak pa, maupe pag abot hangi on ko kamoha. Na udon na mo cellphone eh switch off or put it on a silent mode. Niya ayaw mo pag sige historiya, samting mag sige ang atong proceedings. Ayaw mo kabala ka kay kining tanang membro sa konseho. Ah kita augyo doon sa kayuhan atong tanan. O niya kining, ayaw lang mo pag pakpak, kay dili man sat allow't ang pagpak, no? Kining, ah, oh sige, mag sugod na siguro ta, hinaut nga we maintain silence. Niya katong nagsimba ganina nga magduka, panihok, paning kamutin, nga di tao mo katug. Ah kay usahera ba maka limut mo, muhagok raba ta maka distorbumantas sa proceedings. So, sige salamat ha, okay. The session will now come to order.
Here's all, please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the playing of the nasunong awit. In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Holy Spirit, we acknowledge that you are here with us, that you reside within us, that you are here to equip us. We thank you that it is your divine will to gather us, to see us made whole. That we may each come into the knowledge of your perfect love and fulfill the purposes that you have called us to in this life. This we ask through Christ our Lord, amen. In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Honorable Nandel Hans Abelia, Honorable Sisino Andales, Honorable Nestor Archival Senior, Honorable Albin Arcilia, Honorable Roberto Cabarubias, Honorable Marianita Cabrera, Honorable Gerardo Carilio, Honorable James Anthony Quenco, Honorable Albin Dison, Honorable Johan Yuga Boya Junior, Honorable Aya Hopson, Honorable Margarita Osmania, Honorable Richard Osmania, Honorable Mary Andalo Santos, Honorable David Tumula, Honorable Noel Vansaslaw, and Honorable Philip Zaffra. There are thirteen members of this August body who are present today.
Thirteen members present, and of course, including the presiding officer, fourteen make, fourteen all in all. The quorum requirement has been achieved and this council can now validly transact business. Madam Secretary.
Item E, special session, in order to discuss and deliberate the business unfinished during the previous session. For the final deliberation on the proposed ordinance of member Margarita Osmania, for number one, we have the ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the annual budget of Cebu City for calendar year 2015 in the total amount of 13 billion 397 million 367,359 pesos covering the various expenditures for the operation of the general fund proper of the city government for calendar year 2015 and appropriating the necessary funds for the purpose.
The chairperson of the Committee on Budget and Finance, member Osmania is now recognized.
Yes, good morning Mr. Chair, may ang butang niyo tanan? Um, I move for the approval of the ordinance authorizing the annual budget for Cebu City for the fiscal year 2013 in the total amount of 13 billion 367 million 367 and 359 pesos.
A motion of the chairperson of the Committee on Budget and Finance for the approval of the ordinance for the calendar year, budget ordinance for calendar year 2015 in the amount of 13 billion 367,539 pesos. Is there any second, seconded by member Gabuya Junior, discussion? Member Carilio, discussion?
So that to enlighten us, what were the items deleted? Because there's a difference of around 6 billion pesos. Could we ask and suspend the house rules to allow the budget officer? Because we refer the proposed budget to the budget officer to enlighten us. And probably from there we will have an intelligent discussion of the budget. I, I move Mr. Chair that we allow.
There's a motion of member Carilio to suspend the house rules to pave the way for the budget officer.
Mr. Chairman.
Let me finish first, for the, for the budget officer to enlighten this August body. This is just for record purposes, to enlighten this August body on why the difference between the proposed budget, as proposed by the executive for 19 billion and the budget as now presented by the chairperson of the Committee on Budget and Finance, 16 billion, more or less. Is there any second to the motion of member Carilio, seconded by member Tumulak? Discussion, let's hear now, from, no, I'll acknowledge member Arcilia because it was member Arcilia.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, the motion of member Carilio, my motion is more on objection, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, any, any comment?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Chair. I don't see the reason why we have to suspend the house rules because we are under discussion, Mrs. Chairman, and the committee, chairman of the Committee on Finance can very well explain on the discussion portion, Mrs. Chair. There's no need actually to suspend the house rules.
If member Carilio would yield that the desired information would be explained by the Committee on Budget and Finance, I think there is no need if, if the Committee on Budget and Finance.
Because of the limited time, the copy of the budget as recommended by the Committee on Budget and Finance was received by us in the morning and the official copy was received by us in the afternoon. We referred it to the budget officer for study and probably compare, make a comparison as to what was deleted, what was recommended, and probably a discussion on whether or not these items which are deleted is indeed important and to enlighten us, Mr. Chair. That's actually the point why, for us to proceed with a discussion, with an intelligent discussion, it is very important for us to know the effect of the items being deleted and probably how it is important to the budget office, Mr. Chair. Actually for an intelligent discussion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, yes, member Andales.
In view of the manifestation of honorable Carilio, I move to divide the house whether we have to suspend the house rule, paving the way for the explanation of, uh, of the city accountant.
Mrs. Chair.
So, there is a pending motion, seconded by member Abelia.
Mrs. Chair, because you are still under discussion, Mrs. Chair.
Yes, discussion.
We'll just ask member Carilio to withdraw his, uh, his resolution or request for suspension of the house rules because as I have said earlier, the intention of member Carilio is for the Committee on Finance to explain the difference of 6 billion.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Are you the difference of 6 billion from 19?
Six million from 19 million. So, in the, in the, in the discussion portion, Mrs. Chairman, the Chairman Committee on Finance can very well explain on this particular portion, Mrs. Chair.
With the chairperson of the Committee on Finance, yeah?
Mr. Chair, there is a pending motion.
There's a pending motion for to divide, seconded discussion, that's a discussion, okay? Who, yes, discussion?
Mr. Chair, Mrs. Chair.
Now, let's acknowledge, disrecognize member Abelia, member Abelia.
Mr. Chairman, probably you can ask member Carilio whatever questions he has regarding the budget, Mr. Chair. Probably the Committee on Budget and Finance could very well give him answers, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, member Abelia. That's why, Mr. Chair, that's why I agree with the comment of member Gabuya. If that can be thoroughly explained, the effect, you know, if there are items, we will go items by items and probably a member Osmania can discuss to us what are the items that were affected by the reduction of the budget. And I, I agree with member Gabuya if that will be explained by the chairman of the Committee on Budget and Finance.
Yes, member Andales?
Yeah, a preliminary point, the discussion now is whether or not we have to suspend the house rule.
Since there is an objection, there was a motion properly seconded, there is a motion, we have to, we have to dispose of the motion. So, house rules, to suspend the house rules, we have to now have the voting whether on the motion of member Andales. As, on the motion of member Andales to suspend the house rules. Now, as many as are in. Yes, a motion of member Carilio and as move by member Andales to divide the house rules, okay? As many as are in favor of the motion of member Carilio to suspend the house rules to pave the way for the city budget officer to make an explanation or spell out in details why the difference in the 19 billion vis a vis the 13 billion as presented now by the budget committee. As many as are in favor on the motion of member Carilio may raise the right hand. One, two, three, four, five.
Five votes, Mrs. Chair.
Five votes, as many as are against. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Considering that it is a motion to suspend the house rules, it requires two thirds majority, two thirds vote. So to attain that, we need 12 votes. So considering, madam secretary, please tell us for the record, the voting of the members. Voting, how many are in favor of the motion, the affirmative?
We have five in favor, Mrs. Chair, and nine against, but.
Considering that only five voted in the affirmative, the motion of member Carilio is killed.
Uh, Mrs. Chair, I move to, uh, divide the house as far as the, uh, approval of the budget ordinance for 2015.
There is, we are still under discussion.
Mr. Chairman, prevalent motion.
Yes, prevalent motion.
Two minutes, two minutes recess.
Two minutes recess. Session is now resumed. That's the beauty of this council because we can disagree in order to agree. And even in the spirit of Christmas, in the spirit of Christmas, we can converse among ourselves, have, you know, discuss matters objectively. So that session is now resumed, so member, what's the pending incident now?
Yes, Mr. Chair, discussion, Mr. Chair.
Discussion.
Uh, I request the chairman of the Committee on Budget and Finance to explain the difference of the proposed budget of the executive and the proposal made by the chairman of the Committee on Budget and Finance, Mr. Chair.
And the difference of 6 billion.
And the difference.
Between the 19 vis a vis.
What were deleted, as far as she could remember, Mr. Chair.
Yes, member Osmania, you are not recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. First of all, let me remind everybody that from the very start of the budget deliberations, the Committee on, the council was declared as a committee on a whole, as a whole. Meaning each and every counselor became a member of the Committee on Budget and Finance to discuss, deliberate on the proposed budget submitted by the executive department. I must say at this point that the majority, the majority were very participative and from the very start again, I would remind all that if there was any special concern, to please state, so that we would really say that this is a budget that we all worked on. The executive department said that this is a people's budget. And had the following priorities, the hospital services, CCMC, drainage and blood control, disaster preparedness and public utilities. These priorities would become the basis of the budget review. When we review a budget, the first thing we look at, of course, are the source of funds. On the 19 billion plus that was submitted by the executive department, we looked and we said, okay. So we went with it one by one. As far as the regular sources were concerned, all of this I already mentioned in yesterday's committee report. This amounted to 5 billion 257 million. Tax revenues of almost 3 billion, non-tax of 770 million and external sources, meaning the IRA of 1 billion 500 million. All of that, 5 billion 200 million, okay. He said, yes, this is possible, even if the past four years, 2011, 2012, 2013, and this year, we have not achieved, we have not reached the estimated revenues that were stated in the budget. For the other sources, the executive department submitted the sale of disposed assets, 10 billion 830 million. This refers mostly to the sale of the properties in the SRP. The auction sale of real properties, 50 million. Sale from joint venture and other activities for 50 million and domestic borrowings of 3 billion 100 million. We asked, what are these domestic borrowings? Ngano man kinahanlan maghuwam tao 3 billion 100 million? It was explained to us and true enough, this is to pay off, hopefully to pay off the Japanese or the yen dollar loan that is, that covers the SRP. So kaming 3.1 billion is there only to pay off the conversion or to convert the dollar yen loan into pesos. So with that, we looked, what are possible? What are practical? What are conservative? In the words of our own city attorney, Jerome Castillo, who said that we should be conservative and practical. To give, to show our confidence, in the treasurer's office, we considered all, all of the regular sources. Tanan na ilang gisulti, na ilang makolekta, we said, okay, we considered 5.2 billion. The other sources, we did it this way. I reiterate because I think this is one of the questions that came out yesterday. Sa sale of disposed assets, originally as stated, 10.8 billion. Amo ning butang sa 4.5 million. Ngano man, ngano man. There's a resolution that was passed in August of this year covering the sale of the SRP properties. Duharah, kalote diha, ang gi appeal. Sa resolution mismo, ang estimated value of the property if sold came out to approximately 9 billion pesos. Pero, bisag dun atay buyer and terms of contract said that ang ilang bayron only 50% and balance would be paid within the next three years. In other words, they would not pay the whole amount. So we considered half, 4.5 billion. The others that they said were smaller lots were not covered by any SP resolution. So at, as of this point, we said, let us. So as of this point, we said, let us discount that first. SM and Phil Invest, 490,000. Tanan, sigurado ba yat na that that is part of the loan agreement. Auction sale of real properties, 50 million. Even if this has appeared year after year, it has never been done, we considered it all. Another 50 million from joint venture, we did not consider at this point because there were no definite details, it was not clear. Domestic borrowings of 3.1 billion, we considered because again, as explained earlier, this was to convert. It's really a conversion of the dollar-yen loan, excuse me, into pesos. The total of the other sources would come out to 7,650 million. Total ni Ana was 13 billion, 397 million, 367,359. Yes, a difference of almost 6 billion pesos. That being the case, syempre, kinalan mag-adjust ta, di ba? Kung mauna ang atong estimated na revenues for next year, we have to also adjust the expenses. So, ang pangutana, what did we do? Number one, again, we followed the priorities of the Executive Department. CCMC, there's a 300 million, additional 300 million for CCMC, we did not touch. Drainage and flood control, tanan, tanan nagreklamo bahin sa drainage. We have over 1.5 billion, if I'm not mistaken, almost 2 billion for drainage. Disaster preparedness at all levels, that can be taken care of by disaster because they have a certain portion sa atong budget. And as far as calamity preparedness is concerned, that can be addressed to the 243 million appropriation plus an additional 92 million that will come out to 335 million pesos. For the rest, of course, tanang mga salaries, we did not touch that. PS, ang tawag ni Ana, 1.2 billion. Sa 1.2 billion, naapay sobra diha of almost 500 million na mamang magamit para sa mga unta mga casuals. Sa duhain budget para sa casuals. Tadahanan sa mga JO's karoon, sige lang mabalik-balik pangrenewal. Dili mo sigurado pangrenew mo kay project-based man na. Sa among pagtanaw sa konseho, all of us, kamitanan, nagtuugyod sa inyong trabaho. You should deserve, you deserve more. You deserve more. Na kay sa pagkakaroon ang inyong nadawat, allowance lang, hindi ba? Based on the days that you work. Wala yod mo'y mga benefits, wala mo'y security of tenure. O ang inyong gi-trabaho, dili man na temporary program, ay project. Program ba yat na, balik-balik, hindi ba? So again, mauna ang among nakitaan sa PS, we did not touch it. Sa MOO, operating expenses, maano maka-bayad sa among mga sweldo, bayad sa kuriente, bayad sa mga incentives, sa mga barangay officials, bayad sa mga incentives para sa senior citizens. Sa skolas, inyong mga anak, inyong mga apo, diha man na gikan. No? We only took away what we thought was not necessary, but that remained. Pero murad nagkukaayos atong budget tagipupu ni balik sa Executive Department because 3 billion of that, Mr. Chair, is the loan. So ang net ni Ana is 4,600 million. Sa capital expenses, unsa mino nga capital expenses, that is roads, palit sa mga sakyanan, palit sa mga equipment, no? We put that at 4.5 billion pesos. Unsa o man ipag-decide kung unsa'y mga priority. Number one, ang uban, ni duol sa namo, maunian priority, kahibaw sila because na ang available funds is only about 13 billion, sila nag-sulti namo, unsa'y kinanan unta buhaton. Una, unsa'y mauna. Ang uban, nag-submit of mga budget, pero nagkukaayo panalitan 500 million, pero wala explanation. Sige lang mibalik-balik, palihog lang, ihatag ang listahan, ihatag ang breakdown. Ang tawag ni Ana, lump sum allocation. So please tell us, we said, what does this mean? Ang uban wala, gudibalik. So dili besigurado, unsa'y ilang kinalan, no? So that one, set aside una. But again, I will emphasize, we went back and followed the priorities of the Executive Department. And we made sure that no one was forgotten. Sa mga barangays, ang financial assistance sa mga barangays, ang ilang gibutang diha, 8 million, or 800, 8 times 8, 640 million. Ang among gibutang, 800 million, amo gipunan, ngano man. Ang barangays importante kaayo, kay ang mga barangay officialis, sila ang nakahibaw, unsa'y kinahanlan sa ilang barangay, hindi ba? Sila ang magsulti, unsa'y kinahanlan diha. Kung kinalan sila ug sakyanan, sila lalamupalit, anyway na as sila kwarta. Tungo di Ana, they will be accountable for their own. It will be owned by the barangay and they will be accountable and responsible for whatever they use the financial assistance for. Pero dili man mahimo na, basta makadawat lang sila. Ang amo lang, palihog, i-magsubmit sa konseho ang barangay development plan and project proposals so that we can see and we can help and see where the funds are going. Pero, nagsalig yod me na ang mga barangay officials have the responsibility and the authority to decide what to do with the funds that are given to them. So basically, that is what happened. Yes, 6 billion is a big amount, but with the confidence of the Executive Department that they can sell, they can sell what they said they will sell, we share that confidence, Mr. Chair. That's why, even if, even if, in the past four years, we have not reached the estimated targets, we will share their confidence. The reduction, I don't like to call it slashing, kay murad nag-slash ba yat na, but the reduction or the adjustment on the budget. Number one, I forgot to mention earlier, was the 1 billion we had to reconsider because they asked us to take it away. Because one of that was the sale of the Block 27 or the NRA that apparently they have changed their minds about, minus na na. The other one was the sale of the Inayawan landfill of about 340 million, thereabouts. They said, di na lang. So we had to take that out. So that's how we came up with this budget, Mr. Chair. I hope that I'm able to explain as thoroughly as I can.
Thank you, Member Osmania. Member Carilio?
Yes, Mr. Chair. As Member Osmania already explained thoroughly the budget, Mr. Chair. So to cut it short, this is by way of line objection, Mr. Chair, on the budget. One, on the sources of funds. The sources of funds were limited by the proposed budget of the Committee on Budget and Finance. Personally, Mr. Chair, under the local government code, it is the duty of the local chief executive to provide sources of funds. And the duty under the Republic Act, under the local government code, to implement the same rest on the chief executive. Satopak kung dili siya makaproduz niya ng maong kwarta ngayang gibutang, ngamo'y sources of funds, then ihanan tulobagon, Mr. Chair. So, and likewise, the limitation set in the ordinance on the last item on section 3, all capital expenditure of this annual budget shall be sourced out of the sale of the disposed asset or SRP lot. But pasabutan ang capital expenditure, magdepende kung mabalik ya ba sa chief executive ang utak ya sa SRP lot. For me, this is a very violated condition, Mr. Chair. Now, I raise objection, Mr. Chair, because from there, ako makita, na dagahan kay mga items, na para na ko importante sa atong katauhan. Una, ang chief executive or ang executive department, gibutang of 58 million para sa mga job orders. Kini, tungo kay dunay panginahanglan sa mga job orders. Now, kung atoning, as explained by the Budget and Finance, nga ibutang nito sa casual, kiningtanan. O kung kiningtanan, mbutang sa casual, dili sa pag-igong atong budget sa casual, no? Kay, wad naman sa kapanghatag ng bonuses. So effectively, uban nila mawad ang yod ng trabaho. Ikaduha, the provision as proposed by the chief executive on the City College, the chief executive or the executive department allocated 80 million for the construction of the City College. Kiliunta ang pagtubag sa panginahanglan nato, sa tumakay sunan, ilabin na katong waagid kaiskila, aron sila makaiskila, no? Ang ikaw pat na kung apuntong, Mr. Chair, on the item of solo parents, ang executive department nag-allocate o 40 millionis para sa atong solo parents program. Kini, kinag-expecta na dunan na'y mga, tingali mga 4,000 na nakapadhistro o bo sa solo parent program. Kini maong programa, atoning ya probahan, dini sa konseho. Unya, pinagi sa usak ordinan sa, ordinan sa number 2935, ngamang hatag tag financial assistance para sa mga solo parents. Unya, among ordinan sa nag-ingon pagani, nga magdahin, no? O 10 million, ang chief executive, aron kining maong programa ha? Matagaan o ga, matagaan nato, meaning, ang executive department i-appropriate o 40 millionis, sa programa, nakip na ang, ang, inunta ang livelihood program. No, gilamp na diha ang livelihood program sa mga solo parents and financial assistance, 40 million. Ni atong miracle is, Mr. Chair, ni suway ko hangyo, kaya gipaiba ko nga wa, gidilit ang 40 million, o ni-agree ang atong, with due credence to our Budget and Finance, Margot Osmania, nabutang ang 10 million. But I was surprised pagbuntag na kaga-hapon, nga nawa nasad ubalik ang 10 million ya giallocate, kaya nausab nasad ang maong budget, Mr. Chair. Ako lang, Mr. Chair, kami, ngang panmaya, may tungod at kuyod sa mga taga-DSWS. On the concept, nga ato kining ma-implementa among baulod nun. Dili ni balaud nun, natuha, this is a national law, Mr. Chair. And this program is actually not for the solo parents. This program is for the children of the solo parents that they may able to carry on the task and burden, no? Sa being a solo parent. But unfortunately, wad na kukakita sa maong budget, dini sa atong budget na. And finally, programa nato sa local for peace, no? Ato nang-ga-explain para pagpadayon, pagpaiskila, o ang ma-encourage nato ang mga inahan, nga ilang i-hatod ang ilang mga bata, 0 to 2 years old, ngato sa ato mga health centers, ngato sa data centers, ato ni gibutang among programa sa local for peace. Gibutang ni nato at 20 million, Mr. Chair. But unfortunately, wa ko'y nakita nga nabutang na karoon. So, kini, this is people's budget, budget ni saka-tauhan, Mr. Chair. Naguulang ko nga kini mga item, mga para na nato, importante ni, wad na nato nakita sa maong budget. So that's why I'm making a line objection, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Member Carilio. Mr. Secretary, please take note of the line objections of Member Carilio on the budget order.
In view of the objection, Chair, I move to divide house.
May the Chair be given also an opportunity. This is... If Member Andales, for the sake of transparency, may the Chair be allowed to give some inputs on this budget ordinance? Actually, this is not an objection, but just for the enlightenment of everybody because, you know, we have learned a lesson. Cases, a case was filed against us regarding some measures passed by this August body. And I would just like to enlighten, not only in my role as a, as the presiding officer, but also as a lawyer.
Mr. Chairman, permit his motion, Mr. Chair. Can we have a two-minute recess, Mr. Chair?
Shall we now resume? Later, later. One minute, one minute more. Shall we now resume? Shall we now resume? Session resume. Thank you, Member Andales. This will be very short.
Okay, uh, you know what, uh, Chairman, because it seems that some of our members would like to capitalize people's budget by using people. Now, we don't want that, because we can also, the, the approval of this 2015 budget is also for the people. Now, one cannot just have the, you know, monopoly of using the sentiment of the people.
Okay.
We're there, as matter of fact, I am, I am against the demolition of CCMC, because the Pupus Hospital, until now, has not been constructed.
Take note of the observations of Member Andales, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Chairman.
Yes, yes. Sa akalbahan, Mr. Chair, uh, di lang nato i-courteil and discussion. This is a democratic country, and nga nato, each and every member, panahon, pagdiscuss, unsa' i, uh, ayuhan sa atong sida susuk.
For the sake of transparency.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Member De Los Santos.
Mr. Chair, good morning.
Morning.
Uh, I, I would like to appeal to all the members of this August body, Mr. Chair, to, uh, give each and every one of us to ventilate whatever it is for, uh, the proposal of this budget. Uh, we want that this budget, uh, there should be no cloud of doubt once we approve this. Whether we approve this or disapprove this, Mr. Chair, but in the spirit of transparency and public accountability, I am appealing to each and every one of the members of this August bodies, August body, to please, uh, give everyone a chance to, to speak and explain whatever sentiment they have in relation to this budget, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Member De Los Santos, but just avoid using words as pointed out by Member Andres.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Member Osmania.
Um, in line with Member De Los Santos' proposal, perhaps we can do that as we vote.
Yes. Uh, but we are still on the discussion portion. Let, let's, let's have on the discussion portion. Yes, Member Dizon?
I'm also for transparency, Mr. Chairman. Uh, however, I observe that, uh, this has been going on for, uh, quite some time now, the approval of the, of the budget, uh, and, uh, we have to resolve this.
We have to resolve this before we leave this session hall, even if we leave tonight. Thank you. So, may I request Member Archival to take the, so that, in fairness to the all the other members when the chair participates in the discussion, that he should sit down there as one of the members, uh, so that he can be not subjected to interpolation.
The floor is now open for discussion.
Mr. Chair, considering that, uh, Vice Mayor Labelia is, uh, going down of his seat there because for him to discuss, so leave, give him the first priority to this, make a discussion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Gaboya. Mr. Chairman, fellow members of this council, I am constrained to come down and sit as a regular member, so that I will be subjected to interpolation, because for me, this is a very important matter that should be looked upon, delved into, and passed meticulously by the other members of this council. Of course, I acknowledge the work done by the staff of the Budget Office of Members Mania for having exhaustively, uh, through nights, days, to, uh, prepare this budget ordinance or appropriation ordinance. But, Mr. Chairman, fellow members, in the not-too-distant past, this council was subjected to a administrative complaint for passing a resolution or ordinance granting calamity assistance to our City Hall employees. Of course, we are never daunted, because we know that we are in the right path, but sometimes, it's the bother. We have more important things to do, but answering complaints is somewhat, you know, very rigorous among us, officials and employees of the city of Cebu. The reason why I'm constrained to go down from my chair is that I would like to invite the attention of the members of this council, and of course, as already pointed out by Member Karilio, that one item, especially on the capital outlay, may I invite you to the item on the capital outlay? It's, I think, uh, section 3. The last line says, "All capital expenditures of this annual budget shall be sourced out of the sale of disposed assets," hyphen, "SRP lot." And it says, "Implementation and purchases of any and all capital expenditure items identified in this annual budget shall be enforceable upon the sale of the SRP lot." Mr. Chairman, fellow members, if this item or this provision will be carried on and approved, I think we will be harboring on very serious legal ramifications. If I also recall at one point during the last Sangunean Panlunso, I remind one fellow member on the possible conflict of interest, and he did not heed my advice. Now, a constitutional officer, I mean, Latin names, has found him guilty of conflict of interest. But this is just, this is just a reminder that, as I said, this would harbor on very serious legal ramifications, because section 320 of the Local Government Code very categorically and explicitly states, "Section 320, if I may quote, 'Effectivity of budgets: The ordinance enacting the annual budget shall take effect at the beginning of the ensuing calendar year. An ordinance enacting a supplemental budget, however, shall take effect upon its approval on the date fixed therein.'" And I invite the attention of my fellow members on the last sentence of section 320, which states that "The responsibility for the execution of the annual and supplemental budgets and the accountability therefore shall be vested primarily in the local chief executive concern," meaning the office of the city mayor. So that if we put this particular provision, Mr. Chairman, it is my respectful submission that we will be encroaching and in effect violating this provision of the Local Government Code, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, there could be some mischievous lawyers or crackpots over there, as what we have learned from the calamity assistance, that could file, you know, a harassment case against all of us. And I do not want that to happen again. As a matter of fact, I delivered a privileged speech that I stand by all the other members, even if actually I did not vote on that, because I was the presiding officer. In this particular case, I just would like to make it of record that I cited my apprehensions, my concerns on this particular item in this budget ordinance. If we push through with this, because this would open perhaps the floodgates to a possible suit, Mr. Chairman, like any crackpot, because I think crackpots are not limited only to one group of political party, but could be on the same group, just to harass our officials, Mr. Chairman. They may file a case of violation of the Anti-Graff law, section 3319, section 3E, which, when we say causing undue injury to any party, including the government, in the exercise of official functions to evident bad faith or manifest partiality, Mr. Chairman. So I am just concerned if we continue to put this particular item in this budget ordinance, Mr. Chairman. Dagang salamat, Mr. Chairman. Sir Chairman.
Consular Noel, Menzis Law.
Uh, just to add on, uh, Vice Mayor Labelia's concern, Mr. Chair, regarding section 3 of this, uh, "All capital expenditures of this annual budget shall be sourced out of the sale of disposed assets." My comment on this, Mr. Chair, is that, uh, the annual budget is premise on projection. It is premise on a very, uh, reasonable estimate, Mr. Chair. On section 3, this is as if the all capital in the expenditure shall be sourced out of the actual sale of disposed assets. So this is an actual collection, Mr. Chair. So this is not actually premise on an annual budget, but this is premise on a supplemental budget, Mr. Chair.
Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry, Gaboya, please.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the reason why we consider, because I'm also member of the Committee on Finance, Mr. Chair, the reason why we put a colotilia there, because we really wanted to reach the desired budget submitted by the mayor, Mr. Chairman. Now, ug dili ni sila musugot anak, Mr. Chairman, we can take that 4.9 billion out of the sale of the SRP, so it ma, ma usap billion, ma usap nasad ang atong source of income. Kay, kining inyong presentation karoon, if you only discuss these, you know, our committee meetings, several committee meetings, na, makibaw na onta mo. Now, unsa' may inyong gusto, tangtang onta ni, para ma usap nasad ang atong source of income. Okay, diba?
Mr. Chair.
Um, wait for, counselor. Second, Mr. Chair. Okay. Before that, Mr. Chair. Okay. On the issue, uh, we will be assured if we are going to approve this particular, I have to remind this August body that all approval of this council will be submitted to the Department of Budget and Man, and Management, Mr. Chairman. Now, if they will find it out, nga dili ni operative, they can always tell us, this budget is not operative, but at this point of time, nga we are still approving the budget ordinance, we cannot say that we are, we are under, uh, we can face, uh, legal ratification, ramification, Mr. Chair, unless the DBM will say so, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Um, wait for a while, Consular Andales, I'm going to acknowledge.
Over three-minute recess, Mr. Chair.
Shall we now resume? Okay.
Yes, sir. Before we will proceed, on the division of the House, view of, for the approval of the budget ordinance for 2015, I would like to make a manifestation that there is no provision in the Local Government Code as far as paragraph, the last paragraph of section 3 is concerned. Now, it will be too premature on a part that this is violative of whatever, uh, provisions by the Local Government Code, it's, because this step had been, uh, appropriate by the mayor. So once the mayor will approve that, then perhaps, uh, there will be, uh, uh, ramification, whatever. Anyway, the executive department has all the legal, uh, minds there in their office, and perhaps they can veto that. And moreover, this will be submitted to DBM for its, uh, you know, review. So, let's not be afraid. Otherwise, we will not be here if we are afraid to pass an ordinance or resolution.
Oh, no one is afraid.
Mr. Chair, with the explanation and manifestation of Member Andales, I move for the previous question and to allow each and every member of the Sangunean to explain their vote.
There's a motion to call for a previous question, seconded by Member Osmania, discussion, objection, and nominal voting as suggested by Member Karilio. And of course, in your voting, uh, please cite the particular items which should like to be, to object, like line objections. Is it clear? Yes. Okay. So, nominal voting, uh, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Member, before, before the nominal voting, Mr. Chair, can, uh, Member Karilio or who is the, the sponsor of the, the motion, Mr. Chair?
Member Karilio.
Can he repeat the motion, Mr. Chair, so that everybody can?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Member Karilio, please restate the motion.
I ask, uh, because this is a motion of Member Andales and with an amendment for a nominal voting.
That's correct.
So that, uh, each and every member of the Sangunean, and for transparency's sake, as, uh, suggested by Member Alvin Dizon, for us to explain, and for the people of, uh, City of Cebu, to explain our vote, individual vote, why we voted for and why we voted against, I think it will be more transparent to the people of Cebu, uh, the way we voted and why we voted.
Thank you, Member Karilio. Are you satisfied, Member Wen Sislaw? Yes, Mr. Chairman. So on what should be the order? Should we start from Member Dizon or should we start from Member Dizon? Member Dizon, how would you vote? And if there are any line objections, please say so, Member Dizon. Okay? Member Dizon, please, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, my dear colleagues. I will vote for the passage of the proposed, uh, 2015 annual budget, Mr. Chairman. My reason of supporting is anchored on the following points. Number one, the proposed people's budget, uh, of the administration of the former, of the present mayor, Mike Rama, is, uh, not anchored on realistic revenue targets. So the Committee on Budget, uh, together with other members of the City Council, uh, we sat down for almost, uh, for more than a month to examine, to scrutinize the, the sources of revenues, and we found out that it's not realistic, Mr. Chairman. Number two, I support this budget, Mr. Chairman, because the council appropriated significant budget for housing, which was forgotten by the present administration, Mr. Chairman. It's not part of the priority of the present administration, Mr. Chairman, the budget for socialized housing for lat acision. So the council, um, provided additional budget for housing, Mr. Chairman. And finally, Mr. Chairman, I would like to explain that the importance of having special provisions and colotilia in the proposed budget, because we have had bad experiences, uh, before, Mr. Chairman, in our previous appropriations, nga wala gyud sundas sa executive department ang appropriation ordinance. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, uh, the, the importance of having special provisions and colotilia on the proposed budget. So, that is my vote, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Member Dizon.
Uh, Madam Secretary, please take note the affirmative vote of Member Dizon, and of course, with his thoughts and inputs.
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Let's go now to Member Tele Zapa.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, and good morning, everyone. Uh, it's very hard that we have to reach in this point of occasion, where we have to be divided on matters which we felt is supposed to be for the people. Anyway, as president of the 80-strong barangays of Cebu City, I am happy that an appropriation for the barangay was there and was given, in fact, a significant amount. But I would like to manifest on record, Mr. Chairman, that budget proposals should came from the executive department, and they should be given the privilege and the, of course, authority to decide on matters, on how to do with it, especially on how to dispose it. The Executive Department, is it for that reason that we have an Executive Department? Because we know fully too well that we are under the law, is being entrusted to look into the welfare of the people. On matters such that, I would like to appeal to the members of the City Council to give more, a little trust, no, on that part of the executive. And in addition, I would like also to manifest my reservation on the colatilia, on the appropriation for capital outlay, Mr. Chairman. And I fully subscribe to the opinion of Vice Mayor on that particular aspect. So I decide, of course, to support this budget, but without reservation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Member Zapa. Madam Secretary, please take note the affirmative vote with our reservation, particularly on the item on capital outlay.
Noted, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Member Hapson, this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, we are deliberating this budget for two months already, Mr. Chair, and I've been there during the discussion, Mr. Chair. I fully support with the proposed 2015 budget, Mr. Chair, especially, we address the very important program, the City of Cebu, like the drainage, the health for the CCMC, and education, Mr. Chair. So I vote for the approval of this 2015, Mr. Chair.
Affirmative vote also from Member Hapson, Madam Secretary, and please take note the observations.
Noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Member Cabrera, now, please.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair. I, I vote for the approval of this budget for this reason. I've been with the Committee on Budget as a member, and I believe that we fully discussed on the matter affecting its department and its, its program, Mr. Chair. As the committee chairman on environment, Mr. Chair, I was able, not only in the budget hearing, Mr. Chair, but I was able to talk personally to the department head to make sure that the programs of the environment will be in place, Mr. Chair. So, uh, for, for this reason, Mr. Chair, except for the budget of some job order personnel that was assigned in CSET, Mr. Chair, I lobby for, for the, for the budget chair to make sure also that this budget for the CSET will be prioritized, particularly on their job, Mr. Chair. I recommend to the head of the CSET that this CSET will be included in the casual, Mr. Chair, because of their type of work, Mr. Chair, no? They work in a hazard, in the, in the critical aspect, Mr. Chair, because they engage in terms of reinforcement of the ordinances that is particularly on the aspect of environment, Mr. Chair. And for the BO, I was not able to defend for the BO, because in the executive, it is zero, Mr. Chair. So that's why I also asked the budget chair, Mr., that this will be incorporated in the budget of the barangay, Mr. Chair. So I asked the budget chairman to include the BO appointment in the barangay, Mr. Chair. So that's why I move on this, on the colatilia, Mr. Chair, to make sure also that the budget for the capital outlay will be in place. That's why I favor for this colatilia, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Member Cabrera. Affirmative vote also for Member Cabrera, and also the inputs, the thoughts that he incorporated therein, Madam Secretary. Let's now go to the legal luminary, Member Andalas.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I would like to congratulate the members of Budget and Finance, especially the chairperson, Margarita Osmania, the vice person, Nendel Hans Abilia, then Yohin Gavio Junior, Nida Cabrera, and Leah Hapson, for taking time in the preparation of this annual budget for 2015. Now, in substance and in form, the budget ordinance is in order, which is very conservative, realistic, reasonable, attainable, achievable. And we do not deprive the office of the mayor the prerogative in budgeting for 2015. But the Sanggunean Panglungsod has also the right to scrutinize whether this budget proposal by the office of the mayor is, you know, conservative and realistic. Because I do believe as what Mamdiwa said, at this point in time, we are short 1 billion pesos. So, uh, to have a budget of 19 billion for next year, I mean, perhaps our people will be burdened, because we will be perhaps increasing the taxes. And we don't want that the city government will be looking for money. As, as a matter of fact, the 300 million which is allocated to CCMC for the construction of the new building had been, which is placed in the time deposit, was withdrawn by the city treasurer to pay off for the senior citizens, subsidy to the CCMC, for the payment of the financial assistance to barangay officials, barangay captain, barangay kagawad, treasurers, everything and so on and so forth, which is for the benefit of our people. Because I really, uh, uh, you know, I know it by the fact that we have been begging for the construction of CCMC, yet the office of the mayor withdraw such time deposit for the construction of CCMC, which until now, one year, almost one year, the people have suffered. That is why I am really annoyed by the fact that the office of the mayor quickly demolished the old building without funds for its immediate construction. Who suffered? The people. And then, that is why, uh, this is more practical, because there's another budget for CCMC. We want that the hospital, because we are highly organized city and we don't have our own hospital. Uh, with this, Mr. Chair, uh, the City Council would like to scrutinize the expenses for 2015. That is why I am in favor of the budget ordinance for 2015.
Thank you, Member Andalas. Let's hear now from Member Osmania, although we have heard enough of her.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I move for the approval of this proposed 2015 budget. This being the biggest budget ever for Cebu City, almost commensurate to that of Quezon City, the largest, the richest local government unit in the country with a budget of about 14 billion, and our budget at this point being larger than the proposed budget of the cities of Manila and Makati. I move for the approval because in recognition for the hard work and the participation done by the Executive Department, by the local finance committee, by the different members and the agency heads of the different departments of City Hall, who painstakingly, many of them explained to us the proposed budgets that they submitted. I would like to recognize that, Mr. Chair. And my colleagues, as we have said earlier, we were declared as a committee-
As a whole for the budget and finance.
Um, for the budget deliberations, and many of them did take out, they take their time and really looked at the items that they were most interested in and that they were concerned about, and the, you know, the projects and the programs that they were very passionate about. I thank them for that. And of course, to my staff, as I said, as you said, mentioned earlier. Also, as far as the Section 3 is concerned, Mr. Chair, I see that as a vote of confidence in the Executive Department, that they will sell what they said that they will sell in the SRB. Many times, we have been told that there have been so many interested buyers, and that we were even informed at one time that perhaps the sale would take place and would commensurate, would be finalized even before the end of this year. That is a show of confidence in my, in my belief in the Executive Department's ability to sell. In the meantime, Mr. Chair, I would just like to remind that it is not the end. While they're selling it, we still have a capital outlay appropriation from 2013, amounting to 260 million, which has not been touched. We still have a capital outlay appropriation of a little over 1 billion pesos for this year, 2014, which has not been touched. So as of now, it's not the end of the road. It does not mean that nothing can happen. But again, I personally believe that the Executive Department will be able to sell the two lots that they described, that were described in the resolution that was passed for these two particular lots very soon. So it should not be a limit on their part. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would like, this is my opportunity also, to thank everybody for their participation and even their objections, because it does open my mind. So again, I vote for, for this ordinance, for the passage of this ordinance, Mr. Chair.
Members Osmania, the proponent, of course, affirmative. Next, Member Carillo, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Una sa tanan, magpasalamat lang ko sa atong Committee on Budget and Finance, Member Osmania, ilabinasayang mga staff, for the diligent effort in the preparation of budget. And ikaduhan, Mr. Chair, I would like to also, no, congratulate everybody in the Sanggunean. Kay maskin Sabado, dako nagse-syon yahapunta, and we really exerted our time, effort, aron lang mapasasarning atong budget, and it seldom comes. That nagbot na pasabot, Mr. Chair, kitang tanan dun na yutay dibusyon sa atong trabaho, kainigahin yuta maskin Sabadong dako na agyutadinhi, no? O niya ang tanan na kambungsa, no? O paskopa na ata dinhi. Apan maoligina, Mr. Chair, asamtang kita maglan tugi, tingali, dilita magkasabot, apan at the end of the day, mutrabaho yuta sa ngayana atong trabahoon. Ako alam, Mr. Chair, although I'm not objecting the entirety of the budget, but I am objecting per line, Mr. Chair. Per mero, sa Section 3, sources of funds. Um, claro man, Mr. Chair, under article-
Member, Member Carillo, may I, when you make the line objection, please speak in English for the-
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, I would like to make a line objection. On Section 3, sources of funds, first, the identification of sources of funds. Accordingly, under Article 317 of the Local Government Code, belongs to the executive. And, and in my submission and reading through the Local Government Code, the only thing that this Sanggunean actually can discuss, approve, and disapprove is the expenditure, Mr. Chair. Clearly in this ordinance, clearly in this, in this budget proposal, we are now trying to delimit the rule of the executive in identifying the fund source, and I think we have gone to our limit. We have gone to our duty and obligation, Mr. Chair. Second, on the last item in Section 3, on capital expenditure of the annual budget shall only be sourced from the sale of disposed asset. I believe and I submit that this is a illegal provision that we have inserted, Mr. Chair. And I believe, Mr. Chair, as spelled out by the presiding officer, this will run counter on a bare precept, on a legal precept, that budgeting limitation accountability of the implementation of budget in accordance with Article 320 of the Local Government Code, rest solely to the chief executive of this Sanggunea, of this government, Mr. Chair. And if I may read, it stated in Section 320, the responsibility for the execution of the annual and supplemental budgets and the accountability therefore shall be vested primarily in the local chief executive concern. Delimiting the power of the chief executive, Mr. Chair, is actually beyond the ambit of our power. Uh, Mr. Chair, likewise, Mr. Chair, on the job orders, Mr. Chair, I pity the job orders, Mr. Chair, because we are giving them a false hope that they will become casuals, because our casual limitation again has a cap, 45% of the annual budget. Unfortunately, Mr. Chair, not all of them can become casual. So we, with the suggestion now of the budget, there's a need for us to terminate some of them. And I believe, Mr. Chair, their family, they have families to feed, so in the next year, they will no longer be having, be having jobs. Now on the deletion of the budget of City College, Mr. Chair, this is the first time that we implemented. The City College, Mr. Chair, has been approved by the Sanggunean years ago, Mr. Chair, and thus the executive has proposed an item on City College worth 80 million for the construction of the building of the City College, so that we can provide free college education to our people, to our children, Mr. Chair, so that this city will have a better, better future, and so that we can provide a better education of our constituents. And likewise, Mr. Chair, on the four piece program, the four piece program, Mr. Chair, is very important to encourage my parents to send their students to school, to send their young to the city, to the health centers, so that this will become a program for our city. And finally, Mr. Chair, the solo parent program, the executive, the chief executive has allocated 40 million for the program of the solo parent, for the solo parent that can cope up and will be able to cope up. I explain this again and again, that this program, Mr. Chair, is not solely intended for the solo parents. This program is for the children of the solo parents, so that they can recover from the impact of the separation, Mr. Chair, from the impact that only one parent are now handling their needs, Mr. Chair, and that's the reason I supported fully the program of the solo parent. And this Sanggunean has enacted an ordinance on solo parents, Mr. Chair, and we have allocated 10 million in that ordinance, Mr. Chair. We are the first violator, Mr. Chair, because the chief executive already provided 40 million, but yet we zero in, in our budget right now, the solo parent. With that, Mr. Chair, I believe with this kind of budget in hand, a lot of people, a lot of parents, and a lot of persons will be at the losing end. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Member Carillo. Please take note of the- Please take note of the affirmative vote of Member Carilio and also the line objections that he had just stated.
Noted, Mr. Chair.
Let's go now to Member Cabal Rubias.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In budgeting, we should have the source of fund, then expenditure. What if we spend more than we can earn? So then we go to borrowing. Magmuhuwam ta og di gani ibalighya na'to ang atong umaabot na sweldo. In my humble opinion, we should live within our means. Just to refresh, I am one of those signatory for the sale proportion of SRP lot. Because I believe that the Executive has also the right to sell, so that it will be one of the source of fund. However, we are not also limiting the Executive. If we are going to approve this budget, we can go for the supplemental budget if we have already the fund. So therefore, I will go for the affirmative vote.
Affirmative vote of Member Cabal Rubias, Madam Secretary.
Noted, Mr. Chair.
Member Archival Senior, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am supporting for the approval of the budget submitted by the Committee on Budget and Finance chaired by Councilor Margot Osmania. I always believe in the saying, Mr. Chairman, that we cannot spend what we do not have. So it should be very realistic. So kun sa'naan na'to, Mr. Chairman, I think it is very important that this is the one that we will be spending. However, we are not limiting the expectations. We believe in the Executive, they can always raise funds. Now, the budget is 19 billion, but the realistic one is that we can only get 13. So I support 13, Mr. Chairman. Anyway, if we have budget that we can have, we can always have a supplemental budget for that. Now, I'm very happy that there is a budget for the police. It's a higher budget. However, however, we cannot attain that budget. So what we did is to slash it with the, with the hope that we can increase this the moment we can have it. The other thing, Mr. Chairman, is that from Councilor Carilio's line veto regarding State College. Now, for the moment, I think we cannot do that because we don't have that money, it's 80 million. But I understand we can always find some means so that this budget could be attained. Now, for the solo parents, I voted for this, Mr. Chairman. And I think, and I think for the meantime, it's not, it cannot be executed because according to the ordinance, the solo parents will have to vote three consecutive terms. So many to say nine years. So why put a budget right now where in fact we cannot execute it? So I think this is the thing that Councilor Carilio should look into. We are not actually opposing it. We're supposing it, but the problem is we don't have the money. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Member Archival, affirmative vote of Member Archival Senior. Let's go now to Member Albin Arcilia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, Mr. Chairman, no, Paskorun, pero usahay, atong bang naong gire mo rin, nagkusmod na, no? So, actually, Mr. Chairman, nilinkod ko as City Consular since 2011 up to, up to now. So since before, since 2011, paglinkod na ko, ang atong budget sa siyudad sa subo, pero maintigud kuwang ang kolekta sa atong City Treasuryera, no? Actually, dilila di siya gamay na kuwang, Mr. Chairman, kay we base from 2011 up to 2014, ang kuwang sa koleksyon sa atong City Treasuryera, maabot man yud'ug tag 1 billion pesos. Nasa ato pa, no? 1,000,000, kapin ang kuwang ka na tuweng na koleksyon, Mr. Chairman. Ako pangutana lang, sigi tag buhat og budget na dako. Ako pangutana, kinsa may manubag, ini budget na dili, makakabot ang koleksyon sa atong City Treasuryera. Ang ikaduha po, kumpalalitan, diligid ka kuha atong City Treasuryera, ini dako kay nga budget na atong approbahan, kinsa may mopuno naaba para maimplementato ginitanan nga proyekto. So, ang ako lang ini, Mr. Chairman, I am for this ordinance, no? Hoping lang makakuha ang City Treasuryera og dako na koleksyon, makabalighya sa Yuta sa SRP, uguban pa siguro. O niya ato lang na isupplemental budget, Mr. Chairman, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Member Arcilia. Affirmative vote of Member Arcilia without any line objection. Shall we now proceed to Member Tumulak?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Based on my observation, as what I've seen on the budget in 2015, there are some items na medyo dako, dako or apon, no? But again, when we had a meeting with Honorable Margot Osmania, the Chairman of Committee on Finance, that we can still amend later on, no? Secondly, if our City Treasurer can collect money, as what our colleague said, that we can still have the supplemental. Third, I would just like also to thank the Committee on Finance for the job orders welfare, no? Because I know, Mr. Chairman, kaila ko sa mga job orders, gagikinahanglan juga ayaw nga atong himoong casual, because some of them are highly technical, no? And I hope also, nga unogaling bilik manggani ni, masuod sa pagka-casual ang ato mga job orders, we can find ways nga still matrabaho gehapon ang atong mga job orders. Fourth, as what the Honorable Archival says on the Peace and Order, we have to uplift also the morale of the police, not only for the police but also for the law enforcers. Og unogaling dun na patay igong budget sa city, ah, ato pagyong padakad, no? Ang ato ang peace and order budget, kay gikinahanglan kay ni sa ato ang mga kapulisahan og sa atong katauhan. Fifth is the disaster budget. Ah, kita sa city na kausert ah, nga grabe ka ayaw mga kalabidad. And then we hope the 2015 budget, this would be the Cebu City Disaster Resilient, no, ang Cebu City Government. And then lastly, I would like also to make an appeal to all taxpayers, to all taxpayers, because dilit ni makaya na'to og kita kita lang, muhangi utas ang atong mga taxpayers sa City of Cebu, to please support also our city government so that we can achieve, no, the better budget for the benefit for the welfare of these iguanos. Mr. Chair, I'll vote for the passage of 2015 budget.
Thank you, Member Tumulak, another affirmative vote. Let's go now to Member De Los Santos, please.
Good morning again, Mr. Chair. I will vote for the passage of the proposed budget of 2015 for I find it sound, realistic and achievable. I am so far satisfied on the budget allocation on the priorities of the following. Hospital services with emphasis on the Cebu City Medical Center and all other related health services. The drainage and flood control, disaster preparedness at all levels and the public utilities operations, which includes traffic, communication and electricity. On the issue of the colatilia on the capital outlay, I register my reservation, but I would like to make emphasis that this council gave the mayor the authority to negotiate and sell SRP. In conclusion, Mr. Chair, I believe there is no perfect budget. And despite of the imperfections of this budget, no sector was forgotten. Thank you and good morning, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Member De Los Santos. Please take note of the affirmative vote of Member De Los Santos with of course reservation on the item on capital outlay.
Noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Let's go now to Member James Quinco.
Thank you, good morning, Mr. Chairman. As echoed by my esteemed colleague, Marianne De Vistantos, there is no perfect budget. But I give tribute to the Committee on Finance, the Committee on Budget and Finance. They have spent, I am witness to the sleepless nights they have spent perusing and going through the voluminous items on this budget. I also have been a witness to how they have consulted each and every one of us on this. We may have had some reservations, but legislation is the art of compromise. And you know, after all that is said and done, we need to have a budget that is realistic and doable. And so, I vote for Cebu City. I vote for the people's budget. I vote for this ordinance, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Another affirmative vote for voting Cebu City. Let's go now to Member Nendel Hans Abelia.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, may buntag na'tong tanan, eg mayong Pasko. Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I am voting in the affirmative. I'm supporting the budget for the 2015. Mr. Chairman, I am the Vice Chair for Budget and Finance and I have been part of the deliberations. And, Mr. Chairman, I have insisted that we should give full credit to the sources of funds as far as revenue collections are concerned and even the 4.5 billion expected in the sale of the SRP. And it's in the budget, Mr. Chairman. Well, as far as the colatilia, Mr. Chairman, that all capital expenditures of this annual budget shall be sourced out of the sale of the disposed asset from the SRP lot. Well, Mr. Chairman, I believe that I am one of the proponents in that resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and to sell. I have a feeling that by giving this authority to the mayor, the moment that he can sell and get the money, then these capital expenditures can be sourced, Mr. Chairman. So I have no problem with this colatilia, Mr. Chairman. So with this, Mr. Chairman, I am supporting the 2015 budget.
Another affirmative vote of Member Nendel Hans Abelia. Mr., I remember Noel Wenceslaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Una sa tanan, may buntag sa tanan. First of all, Mr. Chair, I would like to thank the Committee on Budget and Finance headed by Margot Osmania and the rest of the members of the Committee on Budget and Finance, especially the supporting cast of the Committee on Budget and Finance for doing this, ah, ah, proposed budget, Mr. Chair, for approval on time. Mr. Chair, generally, I am for the passage of this ordinance, Mr. Chair. But I have line objections anchored on the following grounds, Mr. Chair. Number one, I am objecting on Section 3. All capital expenditures on this annual budget shall be sourced at the sale of disposed assets. As I said earlier, Mr. Chair, this Section 3 is anchored on actual collection, Mr. Chair. And the premise of the annual budget is premise on projection and based on reasonable estimate, Mr. Chair. That's my reason for my objection for Section 3. Second objection, Mr. Chair, I am objection, my objection is the administration of lack disposal in SRP was zero. And there was a proposal from the mayor. Now, this administration of lack disposal is very important, Mr. Chair, because this is the expense that will be incurred before we can sell the SRP, Mr. Chair. That's why, ah, unsaan na'to pagbalighya sa atong Yuta sa SRP, ah kinahalan magitamo, ah, aduna'tay, ah, gastuanan, like for example, the advertisement cost. So this is important, Mr. Chair. Third, line objection, Mr. Chair, I am strongly objecting that the solo parents' budget of 40 million was strike out in the budget ordinance, Mr. Chair. You know, Mr. Chair, when this ordinance was passed into law, in record, Mr. Chair, I did not support this ordinance. Majority of the members of this august body supported this ordinance and because it was enacted into law, I respected this ordinance. And part of the ordinance that was passed, part of the provision, that there should be an at least 10 million to be appropriated for this. And this was zero, Mr. Chair. So for me, Mr. Chair, I am objecting this, ah, ah, solo parents, that was, ah, gi zero ang atong budget for this, Mr. Chair. Third, Mr. Chair, the GOs. Actually, I tried to talk to Mayet, how many of our GOs will be affected by this proposed budget? And according to our City Budget Officer, there will be 193 GOs that have no jobs this coming January. Out of 422, 193 will have no jobs because ang uban wala man marine you, Mr. Chair, to this budget. Now, according sa Committee on Budget and Finance, ang reason nga no nga atong gi kuha ang atong uban GO because they want it to be casual. Fine, Mr. Chair, and I will support that. However, in the PS ordinance, Mr. Chair, that to be approved, di masataka allocate additional casual, kay wa man na'to grays. And we have a limitation of, additional limitation of at least 100 million because according to the budget law, 45% will be allocated for personal business based on the appropriation of the preceding year. Not this year, but the preceding year, which is 2012. So according to the City Budget Officer, we have 100 million, no? Pero, unsaan na'to pagamit, Mr. Chair, nga wa man na'to ma-increase diri ang atong PS for the casual employees. So di iya puntah maka butang og katong mga GO nga mabalhi na'to sa casual. So that is my line objection, Mr. Chair. Another objection, Mr. Chair, I would like to point out, the intelligence and confidential expense, according sa balao, Mr. Chair, the maximum limit is 3% of the appropriation or 30% of the peace and order program. That is the maximum limit. However, ang atong gi charge is only 250,000. This is allowed by law, kay maximum, raman na, wa may, wa may minimum. So this is allowed by law. But I would like to appeal to each and every counselor na kumpudi pataas adin na'to because this is very important for our peacekeeping program of the City of Cebu. Magsigi tag problema, na daghang kay tag tulis. We have problems of drug addiction. This is a problem nga unsaon na'to, pagsulbat sa atong problema, sa pag-inforce atong mga dugas. And this will be used for our bypass operation. So I am objecting for this, Mr. Chair. And even during the time of the previous administration, Mr. Chair, I tried to prove, even it was a skin and bone budget, but they allocated minimum of 6 million for the intelligence fund. And now, our budget is only 250,000. This is a very meager amount, Mr. Chair. Third, Mr. Chair, another, Mr. Chair, is the discretionary fund. The discretionary fund is 2% of the real property tax, the maximum, but there is no minimum limit. What we propose is only 500,000, Mr. Chair. This is a very too small amount. During the time of the previous administration, our average budget for this, even it was a skin and bone budget, Mr. Chair, was an average of 6 million. But we only allocated right now 500,000. So, Mr. Chair, these are only my line objection. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
And you vote on the affirmative with certain line objections?
Generally, Mr. Chair, I am voting for the affirmative with the following line objections that I mentioned.
Member Wenceslaw, affirmative with certain line objections as spelled out by him in his explanatory vote. Let's go now to Member Rich Let's go now to Member Richard Osmania.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, a lot has been said already, Mr. Chairman, no? As it was said a while ago, sa badong dako, paskong dako, na agi-hapon tandry na trabaho. Anyway, uh, before anything else, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to take my hats off to, uh, the Committee on Finance headed by, uh, my aunt, uh, Member Osmania. Canisya, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, mone pinaka-kontranya every year, no, ka-tatlo ug budget, sacrifice na lang iyang pagga-biyahe para lang ang atong budget. So, to the members and to the head of the Committee on Finance, my hats off. And, uh, appeal ng Vice Chair, no? Of course, no? Anyway, uh, uh, akong only line of objection, kasi garaan gimention na, Mr. Chairman, especially the intelligence fund o atong para sa atong mga GOs, no, more gina akong concerned. But, uh, aside from that, Mr. Chairman, as, uh, Member Quenco would put it, uh, I will vote for Cebu City. I will vote for this people's budget. I will vote for this ordinance, and I will vote for James Quenco. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Member Osmania, please just clarify, there are line objections that you mentioned?
Yes, just for the GOs, Mr. Chairman, and intelligence fund.
Yeah, Member, I mean, Madam Secretary, please take note of the line objections.
Noted, Mrs. Chair.
All the hoping and the affirmative. Let's go now to the last, but not the least, uh, Member Eugenio Gabuya Jr.
Again, salamat, uh, Vice Chair, uh, Presiding Officer. Uh, first of all, ako sangpasalamat sa Consul, no? Sa akong mga kauban for giving me the opportunity to be part of the Committee on Finance, Mr. Chair. And ako sangpasalamat sa, sa mga staff, no? Sa atong ni Consul Margot Osmania, nga they are very, uh, ugta nao na to mas kapoy. When it comes to budget, ang staff yud ni Consulor Margot Osmania maoy pinaka-bisi yud, uh, more than na to dini sa member sa.
With special mention to Abet?
Especially Abet, Panki, and the rest of the, the staff of, uh, Member Margot Osmania. Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, sakto tong gingon, Mr. Chair, nga kinahanglan mo gastuta kung kunun sa inaan na to. Just like in our respective family, kung naatay korte i-gastwa, we have to spend it. Kung wata'y korta, ang atong gastwa, I mean, kung ang atong gastwa mula bawgan ni sa atong kita, mone kuyaw kayo may tabo. Nganuman, mo daghan mga atong utang, diba? As made mention ka ganina ni Member Arsilia, nga kumudakwa ang utang, of course, mo resort na sa daog pang loan. Mo resort na sa dag five-six. Actually, it is same thing dini sa Cebu City. Kumudakwa ang atong utang, tinuod yun na nga, we will resort to, to loan. We will resort to selling of flats. Onya, kung mo resort taog loan, kinsa may maafiktuhan. Kay ang loan delay arba na bayran lang na to, it should be paid by the whole taxpayers. Bayran man na na to tanan, diba? Muna nga, I am, uh, uh, gusto na akong i-share, or gusto na ako suportaran, kanang sulting nga, uh, we will spend within our means. Ang atong budget should be realistic and attainable. Dita gusto nga mahitabo, katong na nga hitabo. In the past, everybody, or most of this council here are, uh, concerned of our GOs. Unsa may nahitabo sa atong GOs this year and the past years. Ang atong mga GOs, they are working what the casuals and the regulars are doing. Silen na rebaho ang ubang mga casual, ang ubang mga regular. Wa, kay mo trabaho? Ang atong GO may bunogayo, infak, wa pagani sila'y mga bonuses. Onya, the sad factor, ang atong mga GO nagtrabaho ug mayo, dugay pugugay swilduhan. Moabot pag siyam-siyam una sila ma-swilduhan. Muna nga, this budget, I'm sure nga mo, mutubag yun eh, sa mga yango-ongo sa mga atong mga GOs. Mingon sila, nga ang atong budget maka-displace sa more than half of the GOs. Pero reminding you, this August body, nga ang atong GOs, wa yun eh assurance. They can be terminated anytime. They can be reassigned anywhere. Is ilabina kung may goes politika, siya kuyudayon ang atong GO. Muna nga, we encourage, with this budget, we encourage our executive, nga kung dun na'tay ma-accommodate sa mga GO sa pagka-karoon nga mahimo na tong casual, we will do it. Precisely, Mr. Chair, ni atong atong no na pi-resolución nagipasar, I am asking the ITRDO Office na to submit to this August body the list of all GOs and casuals employees dini sa atong City Hall, para kung mahibawa na to nga kung dunay bakante, ang atong mga GO nga nagtrabaho nga can qualify to any position of the casual or permanent position, they will be the first priority to be accommodated. Mone ako porvos, Mr. Chair.
Uh, please refrain from clapping your hands.
Mr. Chair, I am a member of the Committee on Finance, Mr. Chair, and the PS allocation still available. Tingali tinuod nga we cannot accommodate sa tanan GO to become a casual or permanent employee dini sa to siyudad. Apan, ang atong general appropriation sa 45%, although ang atong gi-appropriate is pariyaras karoon, apan sa entirety, 45%, we can still accommodate many GOs to become casuals or regular employees, Mr. Chair. No na, Mr. Chair? Ako sa concerned sa nako ang GO. Ugta nan na to mga casual employees, Mr. Chairman. The reason why nga wala ako mo suportar sa solo parent, pero deep in my heart, ganahan ko mo suportar sa mga solo parent, nga tinuod na solo parent, wa ako mo suportar sa solo parent kay kuyawan ko. What happened to our senior citizen now? Ang ato senior citizen, wa dina mga ayaw financial assistance, kitagid dini sa Consul, na gara-gara nga ato tagaan sila financial assistance. Karoon nga ni sugot ang senior citizen na tagaan na to, 12,000 a year, dili day na to matagaan. What happened? Ang atong budget para sa CCM, sige kuha para gehatag sa senior citizen. Gikuha para gehatag sa financial assistance sa tanan mga, mga barangay officials, gikuha para gehatag sa tanan nga financial assistance, nga wa yun na sila mga ayaw kung kitamunis sa at, napiktuhan ang atong budget para sa CCMC. Kung wa palantu, meron pasalamat gane ko, ni Consul Mary Ann De Los Santos nga nakita nya, ang flows sa atong pag, pag, pagbidding sa CCMC. Kay kung nadayon, pa di takamihan. Kay ato na gehatag karoon sa senior citizen. Muna, Mr. Chairman, I hope nga kining budget nga gi, gi maayog yud, gi scrutinize yud ug mayo sa Committee on Finance, o sa Committee as a whole, maka, maka-korek unta ni sa dili maayon nga mga panag-inan in the past. I know, nakabasa ko gehapon sa newspaper, nga this council is branded as babak, bebebagan kunos sa Consul, apan di seguma ketugut, nga atong tuntuhon ang mga tao, nga naatay dagang kwarta't pat in reality, wata'y korta. Muna, Mr. Chairman, I am voting in favor for this, uh, uh, ordinance, hoping nga this will be implemented well religiously by the executive level, kay kining budget nga atong gepasar, atong gehtagan o pagtagad ang mga katauhan, precisely nga ang atong mga barangay officials gi-tagaan na to ug daggo na budget, financial assistance, so that ang atong mga barangay officials dili magsalik sa siyudad, dili maglud-lud. Ukin sa mani dini sa ato City Hall, una sila aproban kung dili lafirmahan. Muna ang katuyuan nga atong gehatag dito sa barang, uh, barangay officials, ang ilahang kagahum pagamit ni ining financial assistance, so that they can, uh, uh, religiously spend and gamito nila sa tinuray para sa pagtubag sa kinahanglan dito silang barangay. Mr. Chairman, with that, Mr. Chairman, I am voting in favor of this ordinance, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gabuya Jr. Another affirmative vote of Member Gabuya Jr. So, the council has spoken. Uh, the budget ordinance, the appropriation ordinance for 2015, um, has been voted by all with certain reservations, uh, for some members, and it's a matter of record already, uh, Madam Secretary. So, with that, yes, it's, 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 it's a unanimous vote. By unanimous vote with certain reservations from the other members, which has been duly recorded, under inputs whether favorable or unfavorable, are also duly noted by the Secretariat of the City Council. With that, the 2015 appropriation ordinance is heard by Karen and approved. Merry Christmas. One more, one more, one more, one more. Merry Christmas, one more on special accounts. Special accounts, special accounts.
Item number two.
Okay, Member Osmania, you have, you are now recognized on the next item in today's agenda.
This will take 30 seconds, Mr. Chair. I, I move for the approval of an ordinance authorizing the annual budget of Cebu City for calendar year 2015 in the total amount of 998,440,540 pesos, covering the various expenditures of the special accounts for the operation of the City Government for calendar year 2015 and appropriating the necessary funds for the purpose.
There's a motion of Member Osmania seconded and Member Appelia. Discussion, objection, there being none, the motion is heard by Karen. The other ordinance for special accounts is heard by approved. Ajorn. Merry Christmas, ajorn, enjoy the holidays.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. So, Chair, may I ask all members of, uh, City Council to proceed to caucus room?
Yes. There's, there's a motion, a suggestion of Member Hapsun.